Welcome everybody to this regular call meeting of the Temple City Council for a workshop. It's November twentieth, twenty twenty five, one thirty P M. And we'll just dive right in. Any public comments today? No public comments. Next item is to discuss any regular meeting in items for tonight's meeting. Council or staff, we need to discuss consent or regular. Very good. Everybody be attentive this week.
Mayor, I have a number of S on the consent and. Um, sorry, letter X. And that is not a number. Uh, just wanted to highlight that, um, as is our practice, we have that on consent for second reading. But there was a split vote on them. So if, if, uh, if you wanted to vote in dissent again, we would need to pull it off of that.
Did anybody change into votes? We'll leave it. We'll leave it on consent. Oh, no, no decisions or final access. Okay, no, I'm finally pleading, you know. Vision Wong called me the other day. She has made it. She was voting differently. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. The choice.
Oh, can I point out? I think, okay, sorry, guess again. I know you'd be excited. The anticipation of which.
No, we have our next phase of the down.
Oh, I can't hide it. Yes. Yeah, I know. I love that.
Um, D, D, number D.
Number D.
Number three.
Our numbers.
So our phase.
Chad doesn't want it.
First lighting program.
He said that was coming up, so he said. He was so happy.
He's not feeling good.
More opportunities for Chad.
Chad was showing off when he had enough, he said, how he is like the guy in control, not that he's not mayor, what it is.
I know.
What? Pretty cool. Okay. Anything else that we're going to discuss but not hold? Everybody good? Okay. Move on to letter two, see the presentation regarding the fourth quarter financial results.
Do you want to be a planning day producer or?
That's me. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's all at one. That's all in one meet time. I'm sorry. Yes. Planning. All right. It's on the regular meetings in the, oh.
You've been seeing those there.
You're up.
Good afternoon, everybody. And we have a couple of annexations and one of these. And I'll go over those very quickly. The first one is twenty five quick annexation. This is for the North Industrial Park. It's a little over eight hundred acres in North Temple that is being brought forward for our first reading tonight. Um, it is intended to expand the North Industrial Park. And then second mile reading will be brought to December fourth. And then on the screen, this is just where you can see where it's located, south of Old Howard Road and Moore'sville Road, south of F M twelve thirty seven. And then on the right hand side is just kind of the survey of the, um, parcels that are being brought forward for annexation from U F S. It'll be followed up with a zoning case and a plat. So the zoning case will come forward and will be handled. Um, through our development review process. And staff is representing approval of this annexation. I have any, is there any questions on this one? If you have any before I move on for the next annexation. Uh, the next annexation, this one is just planned for a right of way along Bob White Road. Uh, pieces of it were brought forward with the previous annexation for the Rowan Expansion. On the Bob White Road, and we just realized that there were segments of that road that were missing. And the Belt County process to bring forward the full road from Little Hall down to the rail. And so this is just kind of a thing of right of way. Uh, for you today and then, um, second reading for December fourth.
Large continues.
And then this is just the very located, and then the right of way is to become Little Swamp to Lorraine. And we are recommending approval of that at last. Any questions? And then finally, what will be presented this evening is the zoning change for forty one Ailin Power Road. It's going from Ax Mulchell Land to Light Industrial Street under the trail. It's part of a previous annexation that was drafted in November sixth. And it'll go before you prefer to read in the night and then second and final reading for four. And this is just to showcase where the property is located. You can see it's predominantly surrounded by line industrial. Um, and it is, uh, for an expansion of Synergy Park. This was not a great place to say. Uh, so it is predominantly undeveloped, but the roadways of Power Road and Lorraine Avenue. And then it is intended to be part of a larger development in the area. And the annexation was approved in November sixth. Uh, P and Z did recommend approval on their November third meeting, nine to zero, uh, for to go from Ax to Light Industrial. And staff is also recommending approval.
R Z and T V C have been working on those properties forever. And they go through and say, okay, we're going to annex easy in about a five minute presentation. I've been looking at these for years. So that's good, though. That's exciting.
Mayor, can I point out another letter on the incentive of that? Um, before we move on. It is letter L. Mike, I don't know if you saw that one, but that is the construction contract for the rehab of the elevated storage tank off of F M twenty four eighty three. And that is the one, that's the tank, as council may recall, that's right next to Lake Belton High School. And that our, um, communications and marketing team and public works team work with their students to do a design for that tank. So we'll see that rehab get started, but that'll also be, um, kind of a, a fun paint that celebrates the school spirit there at, um, at Lake Belton High School while also maintaining, um, temple identity as well.
I might pull that one for voting purposes. I still think he's just. All right, very good. Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to item number two now to receive a presentation regarding the fourth quarter financial results for F Y twenty twenty five.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to present the fourth quarter year end financial statements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Uh, start out with general fund revenues. We're at a hundred and thirty three point four million. Sales tax is our largest revenue source at twenty nine. We have our ad alarm taxes at twenty point six eight. And on the chart, we see the percentages solid waste, other charges for services. Funds, franchise fees, uh, make up a little less than eight percent. Looking at the actual revenue in these categories, uh, sales tax come in the year at a hundred and two percent of budget.
Hey Tracy, before you go too far, would you go back on the ad alarm tax of the twenty point six eight?
Yes, sir.
That's awful late in the year. What, why? That, that's a lot, a high percentage for late in the year.
But that's actually the composition of the budget, not is twenty.
Not actually receipts. Okay. Okay.
I, I have a, to answer that question. I'll jump ahead, Mayor.
That's all right. You can say I'll be good in a minute.
Collected at the year end. Ninety seven point six five percent of the current levy.
Okay.
And that's in line with prior years. But I do have a story or some notes on that. Uh, looking at, I'm going to go back. Total revenues, again, a hundred and thirty two point four million, budget was a hundred and thirty three point. Four nine seven. We're just a little, uh, uh, about seventeen thousand untitled, less than budget. But you see sales tax coming in at a hundred and two percent. Property and other taxes, we're at ninety seven percent and it's a, a variance. Unfavorable variance with a budget of around eight hundred and forty thousand. And that has to do with last year, there were a whole lot of refunds. Like our delinquent revenue account had a negative balance for a lot of refunds. And I think a lot of that had with the new, um, had to do with homestead elections when the school districts really, you know, when they up their, uh, homestead exemption. There's people that didn't have a homestead that thought, wow, you know, found out, wow, this is, this is meaningful. And there was a lot of refunds and also there were some adjustments to the tax rule. So. That was, uh, pretty significant on the property taxes. Franchise fees, less than budget. That had to, uh, looking at that, we had a major, um, data center that was, um, online and then went offline last fall. That impacted the franchise fees for the electric franchise fee, pretty significant. Uh, license and permit, it's four hundred and forty two thousand, uh, over budget. Intergovernmental, a little bit less than a hundred thousand under. Charges for services were at a hundred and one percent. Funds at a hundred and thirty percent. A lot of that had to do with staffing. The traffic unit. Uh, was fully staffed last year. And then interest in other under budget by six hundred and fifty five thousand in total. And that has, um, there's. Revenue, we had booked for insurance proceeds. We haven't done those actual repairs. It's spent, so we don't recognize the revenue yet. And it's carried forward to the, uh, F Y twenty twenty six. So it says a hundred percent, but it's actually, if you took that out more places, it'd be slightly less than a hundred percent. And this is looking at revenues more than budget or less than budget and comparing that to last year. And I sort from big to little for F Y twenty twenty five. Sales tax, uh, greater than budget. Last year, we have to, uh, we didn't make budget on, uh, sales tax. And then Jeff is on the far left this year. He used to be on the far right for the top four treble. But that was, that's partially that we had budgeted to shut down the course some and we didn't. Uh, to do renovations. So it was more than budget, solid waste revenues, more than budget, license and permit. And then far right again, that's, um, that other revenues has monies. From the insurance proceeds that will be carried forward and also reinvestment zone funds that will be carried forward to the new year. Um, just some revenue highlights on the sales tax. This shows Temple compared the straight lines state of Texas. And then break on the far left. And Temple, uh, was just only three percent growth. Look at historically in twenty twenty one. We had the post COVID, a lot of, um, I think that was a lot of stimulus. And development in Temple that drove that those numbers in twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. Twenty four, we started dropping twenty five, um. We, again, we only are at two point six seven percent. Growth. And with that, we're budgeting a six point four one percent growth for twenty twenty six. So we're probably going to need to watch that closely and may do some adjustments there. I've, this just shows month over month, um, compared to the previous year and our first receipt in October of twenty five for F Y twenty twenty six. We did show a decrease. And also when I look at the chart, I like to look back at October of the la- last year. So you're comparing to a month that was real high. And then when we compared this year's receipt, we had a decrease. And I just went over this, the revenue highlights for, uh, property tax collections. And again, this is on the current levy, not, not delinquents or. Our years, we're in line, pretty consistent, right around ninety seven and a half percent. Uh, looking at expenditures, um, total expenditures were a hundred and thirty six point two million. Uh, the composition of that almost, uh, or sixty two percent in is personnel. Twenty six percent operations and capitals a little over six percent. Comparing that to budget, we're at ninety one percent of budget. But we do have, uh, encumbrances, outstanding purchase orders or. Mostly outstanding purchase orders that we roll to the next year. So when you add that in, favorable variance of five point four million. So thirteen point three million less than budget, but with encumbrances carried forward. Of eight point two million, it brings it to five point one million less than. And again, what are encumbrances? They re- represent commitments related to unformed contracts for goods or services, maybe purchase orders, contracts or other. And we roll the appropriation to the next budget year.
Tracy typically aren't this time of year. I mean, at, at the end of the fourth quarter, right? Typically, we've been a hundred percent and we're at ninety six and a half. Does that, does that give you any concern or pause or?
No, that's, uh, we typically are, that's our goal to be less than a hundred percent.
For expenditures?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's in line.
Yes, revenue with, um, as I said, sales tax, we need to really watch this year. Also in twenty twenty four. I mean, twenty four and twenty five, there were some one time. That nonrecurring construction type revenue.
Yeah.
Of big chunks, but we're about to with some recent ethic, non-development contracts, et cetera. And it appears going to be need construction.
So that's why that you feel good with the six and a half.
Again, we, we watched that closely month to month.
Yeah.
So.
That's a pretty big jump.
Yeah, and see when.
Well, just, just from twenty five to twenty six is. Uh, but with upcoming construction, you think it'll do that extra three and a half?
I think the timing we've got to watch, but when, back in the June. And July, when we were preparing the twenty twenty six budget and forecasting, we thought the growth was going to be closer to six percent for this year. Um, and, and this.
The last half of the year on sales tax was slower than the first half of the year. So.
The last quarter. Um, we had to, or, yeah, July, August and September all were increases in our sales test.
Compared to the previous year.
I'm sweating now.
I don't get it.
Okay, um. Expenditures more or less than budget. Again, the dark blue is last year and the light color is this year. With the compensation studies and new, um, implementation of those studies. And as y'all, y'all know, at one time, the police department was, had like thirty five, forty vacancies. And now at one time they were fully staffed, you, that showed up this year. And we don't have what we call the lag dollars in personnel. And I just, just to go with that in more detail, personnel. I looked at the police department last year, theirs was a, a very large number of lag. And the far right in this year is practically zero. But that's being fully staffed. There's parks and streets, they have turnover fee. Um, they had less, uh, lag this year. But it's just, and then the others, um, you know, all through the departments. But again, we're, we're staffing has lowered that. Or compensation and just, um, getting positions filled has lowered that lag number. Which is, you know, the one, the one we closed staffed. Um, with the revenues being lower, I do want to point out at this, this chart. Each, at the end of each year, we adjust our rainy day balance based on previous year's, uh, actual expenditures. And we did, uh, add to that a little over, I think, close to two point eight million dollars. We did have a supplement in the F Y twenty twenty six budget. But we're starting this year out with three hundred and eleven thousand. We normally like that to be around two million. If I, I had point back to, um, in twenty twenty five, we had some major. A lot of adjustments. Um, a lot of repairs and maintenance on fire trucks, um, on garbage trucks, you know, more than normal each year. This is something we've got, uh, that number is lower than we like to start the year with.
We normally use that for capital expenses, right?
That's what we use the four million for. We did use four million for capital.
Okay. So we're not missing, missing out on sort of our, the regular process by only having three hundred and eleven thousand.
No, but we.
Two point eight in the rain day.
There's just, uh, no, what's in the budget is what's in the budget. There's no mid-year, hey, can we do this? That's just not available this year.
Yeah.
We did, again, our.
Tracy and Bryn are Grinches this year. No, 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 no.
Yeah, I can't.
We had no problem with. Uh, water. Came in the year at ninety eight percent of budget, revenues at ninety six percent, the water revenues at ninety six. Waste water at ninety nine percent and then at fluid, um, was one point five million for a budget of one point one. That's what we sell the panda energy. And then, uh, other was a hundred and five percent of budget. I wanted to point out.
Do we, do we sell Panda bottle a gallon or is it just a year?
No, it's a, it's a demand fee plus, uh, by the gallon. The fluid, it's a different price in. It's a different price at Dodger than.
There's an algebra equation in the, in the water agreement, and I'm, I'm being serious. There's. None, there's letters in the, the formula. So, um, that's a bad friend. And there's two. Yes, and there, there are two different formulas. So Panda one has one calculation and Panda two has a different calculation. Because some attorneys before Kathy really liked to put math equations in contracts.
Wow.
And sometimes we sell them regularly.
We sell.
That's just under the regular rate.
Yeah.
Jonathan, they had a pretty complicated one year. We had something that he had, uh. Where we invited some natural gas, uh, franchise and the, on, I guess. Atlas could not manage the formula calculated through their billing system. So we had to do it manually. Cause it was that complicated. So, uh, and to look at our water revenues, we had, um, you know, a very wet spring, but in previous years we had too. But I think in, uh, August, July, August, we, we didn't sell as much water based on more rainfall. Looking at the expenditures in the water fund, we're at ninety seven percent of fifty two point, a little over fifty two million. The budget at fifty three point five, we're at ninety seven percent. Like, whoa, a hundred and two percent on personnel. That has to do with an accounting entry for Gatsby one O one implementation of that. It's a new calculation to accrue, um, um, accrue, accrue the expense for accrued vacation in sick leave. But it's, and again, the, the water fund is an enterprise fund. Uh, but that's why I never went to a hundred percent because of that accrual. Hotel motel fund, um, actual was one million, two forty. This is, oh, this is a net. This is presented a little bit different. Revenues, uh, actual were four point four million. Expenditures were at six point two million. Other financing sources uses, uh, a little over twelve thousand. And it shows that deficiency of one point seven million. The beginning fund balance was two point nine million and the ending fund balance is one point two million. Comparing that to budget, we were about one, close to one point five million less in revenues. We asked, um, favorable, favorable that, uh, variance for expenditures. And with that, it showed that just a deficient, moves that budgeted deficiency to three hundred and twenty six thousand. But again, the fund balance ends at one point two million. Looking at hotel motel fund tax revenues, just from, uh, heads and beds. This shows historically. Pre-COVID, we were starting to climb with our receipts. COVID hit in twenty twenty. They went down twelve percent. Twenty twenty one, they started calming. But this year we did show. Um, a little less than a ten percent decline in hotel motel tax receipts. If you look at this by month, and this is the average collected each month of hotel mo- motel taxes. A little over two hundred thousand, and that puts for F Y twenty five. This is hotel motel occupancy rate. And you can see the red line twenty twenty five, it was down. Right?
I mean, I did want to tell. Heads and beds were down so much.
I don't know if there's anybody here for tourism. Um.
When the Hilton Garden Inn closed?
Yes, and that's one of our top tax, I mean, top hotel motel tax player.
Yeah, they were renovating for a long time.
Right.
I, um, we can dig into that a little bit and see if we can get any insight into what might have driven that. I don't know off the, off the top of my head. I do know historically. That our, um, hotel night stays are heavier during the week as they're driven primarily by. Um, medical or business stays versus weekend, um, stays. So if there and, and. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure if there was a general trend over the year related to, to business travel. I'm not aware of that. Um, I, I can't think of in my head anything that, that was, that. I at least experienced that was different in terms of seeing people come in for business related, um, needs. So I can check with our, um, with our team to see if they have any insight and get back with you on that.
We've been a hell of a time, or, or a curiosity thing, but if there is a trend or a pattern we need to be aware of, that'd be good to know.
Again, this data comes up in the monthly T B I report, the occupancy rates and the hotel, hotel receipts. Drainage fund, uh, revenues were at a hundred and five percent, uh, three point three billion, budget three point two million. Expenditures of two point one, budget two point seven, a favorable variance of six hundred and fourteen thousand. Some of that was carried forward through purchase orders in the twenty twenty six. And we began the year with the fund balance of two point nine million, ended the year with a fund balance of three million. Federal state grants, um, total of fifty five point nine million dollars. Uh, thirty five point two four percent of that is for transportation. I got a slide on that. You can drill into that. Past through financing agreement, that was for the outer loop. And we have payments of that for twelve years to stage maintenance. And we're about at the end, so that will roll off of our, was we got fifteen point five million. Uh, in the past year, by the way.
Tracy, that was, uh, for Loop three sixty three though, right? Not the outer loop?
Yes, you're correct. I'm sorry.
And that's covering debt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So whenever that, those dollars roll off, the debt rolls off too.
Correct. Is what, um, they're paying us back based on bracket counts on the Loop three sixty three. And they have a minimum, a maximum. And. The maximum is like one point five million a year. And I think twenty twenty seven is the last year of that. And the state also contributed twenty million to that project too.
Okay.
Uh, public safety and youth programs, fourteen percent, health and human services, eight point nine, nine six. Community development fund, seventy percent of public total airport, four point eight six. Now look at the transportation grant, outer loop, west phase one, we got. Now look at the transportation grant, outer loop, west phase one, we got thirteen point two million. And the highway infrastructure program for veterans memorial at the boulevard, five million. Georgetown road road trail phase one, one million, two eighty. And you have an item on your agenda tonight that will increase that grant to three hundred and twenty thousand. But buy three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a total of one point six million and lower the city's match. Um, and then highway safety improvement program for east central sidewalks, two hundred and eleven thousand. Moving on into our investments.
Tracy, can I say something about, uh, just that, uh, on transportation-related grants? Just as a reminder, this will only include, um, projects that the city of Temple is managing or letting. It doesn't include grants that we have secured on behalf of the community that TechStop manages directly. Like for example, the main lanes of Loop three sixty-three, we, uh, receive funding through that, through K-Tempo process. But it's entirely managed by TechStop, so that doesn't hit our books. But that is money that's coming and benefiting the local economy and our transportation network.
Is there an easy way to get those dollars to find out what that is?
Yes, it's, it would be easy for us to do that.
It's be interesting to see comparatively, state managers versus city managers.
We were smart added to this presentation too.
Cause that, that Loop project's big.
It is.
Real big.
I like to brag about it.
Investments, uh, the city's investment portfolio was earning four point two, two percent at the end of the, our September thirtieth. Our benchmarks are rolling T bill of ninety-day T bill, four point two four percent, we're slightly below that. A year ago, we're earning five point oh nine percent. And our rated average maturity of our portfolio is eighty point nine nine days. That's close to eighty-one. Uh, total investments are four hundred and sixty-one point six million dollars. We have eighty-three point one, three percent of that in government pools. Uh, twelve point seven six percent of it in CDs and four point one one percent in cash. And that cash is still earning interest. And this just looks at some key rates that I just went over. The big one now, capital improvement program, the largest ever.
You say that every day.
I do, I do. Seven hundred and twelve point two million dollars, investing in capital projects.
So a year ago or two years ago, it was five thirty-four or something. It's amazing.
The historical.
Years ago was two thirty-nine.
Yep.
That number also doesn't include funding the, the TechStop projects too, so keep that in mind as well.
So it's a huge investment in our. Looking at the, the capital improvement program based on dollars, uh, four hundred and fifty-nine projects under construction, forty-one point two percent. Twenty-six point nine eights in engineering completed are twenty-four point eight three and a little less than seven percent in the planning phase. Yeah, that's historically, and we just went over that. Um, moving on into the strategic investments of, uh, zone, uh, that is designed to encourage redevelopment of strategically important neighborhoods and corridors. It includes funds for services related to those listed on the bullets. And that totaled allocated to date, FY two thousand and eight until now is just a little less than two point five million expended and covered to date, uh, or committed is two million ninety-eight thousand, leaving a balance of three hundred and ninety-six thousand. Um, and then the neighborhood improvement grant program, there's two pending applications as of September thirtieth, for a total of twelve thousand eight hundred and ten, ten dollars. And that concludes the fourth quarter financials. Uh, those are unaudited. You'll have your audited version in February. But the numbers will look very similar on audit. If not the same.
Very good. I don't think, Tracy, any questions, man? That seems like businesses you go for the most part, right? Percentage wise, this will.
The revenue, uh, we begin with, we don't want much sales tax moving forward.
Yes.
And also, um, we don't have the flexibility to uh, fund additional items that weren't in the budget.
Yeah.
And fund costs.
That increase and even like from two point six seven to six point four one or something like that in sales tax increase? What was that about? Two million dollars? The difference?
I have to go back, Mary. Not thinking of the numbers right now. The two, the growth is a little over, the two point six seven is a little over, a lot of million dollar growth.
From twenty-five to twenty-six?
Yeah. Oh, from twenty-five to twenty-six, it is, yeah, about two and a half.
But that's already baked in to the budget.
Yes.
We can't, that's not two and a half. That's not any fun money.
But, but again, we watch that closely month to month and if we need to adjust
Yeah.
on the expenditure side, we make those recommendations.
Understood. Very good. Thank you, Tracy. Counseling thing for Tracy before we move on? Very good. Next item. Item three is to receive departmental updates from Parks and Rec, General Services and Neighborhood Services and Library. Just going order, Mr. Peter.
He was first.
Well, you're ready. I haven't been, uh, virtual for anything in a long time, but that's what I was told. I'm well, not really, it's Tracy, but for me, so I can't. It's Dana went before me, so really I went up number one with that.
All right. How many slides do you have?
Uh, twenty-nine and, uh, it's gonna be fast because of pretty pictures, uh, but I'll tell you that.
We don't believe that.
But the very last, there's gonna be a question, uh, slide, right? The one after that is the most important slide, just so you start thinking about it. That's gonna be the most important slide.
It's still in print.
And then, uh, I want to introduce, uh, a, well, this, I think you already know Chuck Brown. He, uh, not everybody knows, Assistant Director for the Department. Susan, right next to me, uh, she's one of the Recreation Services Division Director and she has all the, the community centers under her. And then, uh, Tracy, go and why that back here is Jeff. That's the way I move to the left side. As Jeff would, uh, you know, uh, you mentioned how he's moved over and things look so much better out there. There, there's not one reason. He's a great leader, very knowledgeable, but go back many years, the commitment the council has in doing the infrastructure and improving the course and it all, it all pays dividends and, yeah, so.
You know, golfers are a finicky bunch, right? I mean, you, you gotta spend money to make money with those guys. Sure, and gals. Okay.
Okay, uh, so, uh, you know, uh, I see my staff starting some of Jeff's philosophy is, uh, weather days, right? Some of their rain day because it does affect, and I'm looking at Heather over there, you know, she hates when it rains because, you know, the water revenue and all those. Uh, we're using a lot of Jeff's terminology these days, but, uh, thi- this year, uh, uh, we lost, uh, we usually have seventy days of operation and we lost eleven, uh, days, that's fourteen percent. Also, I thank you in there, I was getting brought foot, uh, like two or three days that we were down. Our processing system was down and so they called me at home and said, hey, pull systems down, what do you do? And I said, well, you let them through until it comes back up because I get a whole band full of kids and parents. They get up there and you tell them you've got to have cash and they don't have cash. Now you've got a lot of angry kids and parents. I said, it's only let them through. So that happened, uh, so all that.
I would like to say that was not my fault.
It, it, it just, it happened. We made a call on the fly and we just kept going with it and so it was all good. And the, the next one, uh, you know, I think a lot will probably have to do with, uh, uh, the rain and the weather. You, I highlight Clark there, yay for Clark, cause if you look between twenty-four and twenty-five, you're the only pool that the tenants was up, uh, this year. So, uh, not sure, uh, the reason why, but, uh, it was. And so, uh, it's good to see Clark, uh, uh, doing well. Swim lessons down a little bit, uh, but still fairly close. And remember last year also came and presented, uh, and I was telling you that American Red Cross had their centennial program that they were, uh, uh, trying to get, uh, kids into swim lessons, especially the African-American children that are, you know, like five times more likely to drown. Uh, and so we were really pushing it and we had that many people, uh, kids to go through the scholarship program. And I believe then also, uh, when they clicked the application, there was a link that also took them out, a shout out to NAACP, there was, you had an opportunity to apply them for another ten dollars off. And that would be completely free. So, uh, we're gonna, uh, look at, I think, turning that in just a little bit, but the great program. Rentals are down, uh, uh. Probably, that, now that is your fault, Kelly. I said, I'm gonna leave that one. So, uh, rentals are a little bit down. You'll look here below. It tells you that Clark Line Junction of Walker where they were compared to last year. Once again, it probably had a lot to do with, uh, the weather and then at Lime Junction, uh, they was. Aquatics, uh, I think this is a, uh, this is turned over, uh, several years ago. But, uh, probably a couple of years ago, we finally got all the pieces in. And, uh, this is one of the more stable divisions, the more, very strong. And at the top will just kind of go down. So, uh, perhaps you just remember that, uh, Texas Recreation and Parks Society. So Clarice was named individual of the year, uh, and then below this is, uh, Matthew Waskevich. I think that's how he says his name. I had to keep saying it over and over. Uh, he earned his water safety instructor trainer, John, uh, lifeguard instructor trainer. So those are the, he can now, uh, when we get ready to do water safety instructors, uh, we can actually teach some of our staff to actually be the one that can teach, uh, other lifeguards to help. So try to keep it all internally to grow the program. They've done a great job, uh, also just, uh, uh, you get a little stability, especially with Clarice coming back to us. It's more like a family. I'll tell you, uh, uh, Erin's not here today, but you know, every year she said, hey, how are we compared to the market, uh, the pay rate? And so with her leadership, uh, Clarice's leadership, uh, this past year, I believe April, we were completely full of lifeguard. We had not had that happen. I don't know when's the last time and we were always scrambling. Uh, sometimes we were saying we're gonna have, you know, delay opening a pool. That did not happen.
How many do you normally hire?
I think like Lime Junction itself is like seventy-something. So if I had to guess, over a hundred, maybe?
Yeah.
So I could get the exact numbers, but I know Lime Junction is.
It's a bunch. It's a heavy lift right away.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, um, Lime Junction, uh, won the photography, the aerial view award. This is actually a little better update picture. I'll tell you what I'm doing with mine in a second. But, uh, Lime Junction won an award and then, uh, hats off to Glenn, her turn. I see Austin over here, uh, you know, they, uh, uh, we got these nice projects, but we don't do a lot of construction day-to-day, you know, the brick and mortar. Hand it over to them. They work with us. Hey, what do you want to see in the building? It's worked out well. Uh, so we are, uh, way, I think way underway on this lifeguard building. We did not have a place, uh, come up, ready. It just doesn't work. So this is the, the, uh, office in the past, this is where the reception is. You come in, people are paying, all of our extra guards in there. They really didn't have a place to hang out, to rest, cool off. And then, so we're playing with the building right here with the X's. Also would use it as a training room. It's big enough that they can do their CPR training and all that stuff out there. Uh, and so here's, uh, some of the pictures, uh, so that's where it's located. And one of the key things was, hey, when you may be in there on break or whatever, but you always gotta be able to respond. So you can see the big window, look, look out over the pool and they can still get out if there's a, uh, an emergency or anything. That's just another, uh, side view. Athletics, uh, grows volleyball, uh, uh, you know, you hear that volleyball's big, right? Uh, I hear that all the time and people are having to go down to the, uh, south of the cities to, to play and have tournaments. Uh, our numbers are steadily growing, uh, you can sit there and then fall, uh, winter leagues last year, uh, the rain. There was so much rain, we just could not logistically have it and make the season, so it got washed out. So the two fifty, uh, co-ed and the men's softball, uh, uh, are doing well this time. And of course, cornhole is coming up as well.
Where do you have your leagues for the volleyball?
Uh, that should be over at Clarence Mark. Uh, another one here is the, uh, the tournaments. I will say that, uh, I asked today to make sure that, uh, everybody's primarily using crossroads as their home base for the tournaments. And then if you're big enough, they're spilling over to Wilson South Field for the out at Lime Park to those fields. Uh, and that's how they, uh, kind of look. We were down a little bit, uh, in the, uh, summer tournaments this year and the winter tournaments. Uh, looks like we're gonna be up a little bit, uh, compared to last year. It does rain, cause may I know you asked an expression, uh, seems like every company here, where are these teams coming from, right? And a lot of them are local, uh, people, uh, locally doing it. But there are some from San Antonio. I saw some down, uh, even the Curville, not Curville, uh, oh my goodness, what's the, Bermuda area, that area. But, uh, in, but in terms of bringing people out of state or anything, uh, that's not, that was not the base in any of these tournaments here. And then, uh, fifteenth annual Turkey Trot, uh, coming up, uh, everybody's welcome to still sign up. You can actually sign up, uh, the day of. And, uh, we anticipate, uh, or they think they'll have a, maybe ninety to a hundred sign up the day of. In two thousand and eighteen, the only year that we ever exceeded a thousand and it was a thousand thirty-one, I believe. So, uh, that's continued to grow back now since COVID and, uh, that'll be a great there. Simmons Community Center, uh, these are the, uh, the nomads right now. They, uh, are having to do programming at Gober. Uh, Wilson Recreation Center, even the Sun Glow Building, uh, down that, you know, MLK Festival ground. So, uh, they, they are just, uh, they're making do and so they're doing a good job. Uh, I'm sure probably somebody who's heard from them, uh, I get some calls every now and then, hey, how are things going? What, what's news on Simmons Community Center? And so, uh, hopefully we'll get there and it'll all be great if the, that can, but you can kind of see what they're kind of doing. I really like, uh, uh, Wilson does it, but then also the grown-ups group. It's a, a group of adults that have disabilities that we do special programming for them. Uh, I, I really think, uh, that group over at Simmons, Marissa and Terry and them, they do a lot of TR, what I've called therapeutic recreation and I think that's very valuable for the community. Cooking program, I said, well, how in the heck are you doing cooking? And it's at Gober, you know, that is very limited. If you've been in Gober, you know, it's not like the community center with their stove and stuff. I think this, uh, this month they are cooking, uh, homemade biscuits or roll, rolls. And, uh, so they've done homemade tortilla making, uh, other stuff. So, uh, uh, they, they're, they're making it work and it's a very creative group over there. Then you'll see the stuff that we've done also, uh, in October, other stuff they do. And then coming up, the annual senior Christmas dinner, um, very special Christmas at Gober. Once again, that's another, uh, uh, event with those that are disabled in some sort. And so they work with them and then the New Year's bash at Gober. Uh, Summit Recreation Center, uh, uh, they had a camp this, uh, this past summer, approximately a hundred and sixty kids attended. Corporate challenge, uh, he will, uh, have to not, uh, Susan will be, uh, recognizing the, the winners of, of that. And, uh, we did have four, uh, new companies that were not with us last year. So that, that's always exciting to see. Uh, they did do a, a Zumbaathon to support Christ Cancer Month in October. And then their winter camp will be coming up in December. Well, Wilson Recreation Center. Uh, you know, basically that top one, uh, is a great, great one. We used to, uh, till we got that, everything was still the paper, frame reebinder. And, uh, so I'd go out, uh, I tried to. I'd go out, uh I tried to go out once every time we'd have summer camp or one of the camps. Hey, you see that kid over there? I want their paperwork, just a spot check, right? They have all the stuff for this. That's supposed to be good. Now it's all digital. They'll make it much easier uh just in terms of uh trying to tote those notebooks all over. So every time they go on a field trip, they gotta take that three ring binder. Now they've got little tablets with all the information. So uh that's been a very good deal. And they are finally fully staffed. Uh they had uh Howard Mount Malik Green. And um he's another program coordinator. Uh he he's doing well. Came to us from San San Angelo. He graduated there, was a football player, and now is getting his masters at uh where? Texas State. Oh. I like that guy. Okay. Uh and then the next one, the Youth Advisory Commission. That one is kind of, uh to be honest, kind of floundered some over the years. Uh just the leadership that has switched over at Wilson Recreation Center. And uh it seems like now we've kind of back on the track. Uh Susan uh came from the City of Waco Parks Recreation. She was over their Youth Advisory Council. She said, Kevin, it reminds me a lot when I I they gave it to me, didn't have many. And then when she left, uh you had up to thirty twenty-five, like thirty-eight applications, twenty-five positions, whatever. Uh they are currently uh 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 doing a basket donations and they're then going out to different uh medical facilities and honoring and helping nurses and other assistants. So uh they seem excited, I was told. And there's uh uh there's a five, but they're modified and they're very excited. Hopefully they'll get going again. And then Home School Recreation uh comes to us uh monthly and they do programming, different activities for the kids. Uh and then the other one that's coming uh soon uh is the Recreation Station. That we will take our uh mobile recreation van, go into the community where uh kids may have access sometimes to a park and a playground, but maybe not. They're too far away from a gym or something, so we're gonna do activities with them. There's, that's been done successfully all over the country. Uh Louisville is a great example. They grew big enough. I believe that's the one that uh they have general recreation. Then they grew so big, they have another one that just does uh nature-based activities. So uh it's exciting to see where that uh program is gonna go in the future. Okay, so, oh, I forgot. So this is first Tracy. So any numbers you see budget-wise, these have not been audited by Tracy's group. I've got to remember to remind everybody that we'll be, we'll be close. Uh we'll be in the ballpark. It's not like we're gonna be in another city playing. We'll be in the same ballpark as Tracy's numbers, but uh here here's where Jeff, uh uh you know, I've had questions with Jeff. Yeah, Temple's only gonna grow bigger, right? And you can only do so many rounds. What are you gonna do to make sure maintenance? You can't just always put somebody there all the time. You don't have time for maintenance. And so he's got a lot of ways to to creatively tackle it. But you can see, uh you know, you jump here. So here are the rounds for last year. Just immediately, let's go down here. And that's the highest rounds as far as Jeff knows that we've done. So uh hint, I think it's only gonna continue to grow. And just remember, just remember, uh here's the, here's a little sad story about his, you know, weather days. If you didn't have that, even more, right? Uh it's it's amazing uh how well that course has really turned around. Uh and then, of course, there's uh weather days and then tournament rounds. You can see uh where we are on that. Uh these are uh, these are not all of the uh, there's so many different line items for his revenue, but these are the big items of his budget. But this is the total. If you took all the little line items plus the big ones, you can kind of see how uh uh how he did it. So you know, I said, okay, wait a second. How how do you uh even with more rain days, your revenue is going up? We also had uh carp uh rate increase uh in green. Did you do green fee a couple?
Just just cards, just the
just the hearts. Uh so everything, everything is uh uh you can just look across the board. Every category is doing well. Now hop over to parks. Uh uh these are where the pretty pictures will come in. This will go uh a lot quicker. The uh the playground was put in uh just a couple of years ago now. Uh it's received fast. Uh basketball court, that was completely redone, new sidewalk put in. Uh the park development manager, I was telling Brandon Staff, he's really big and to make sure accessibility, you've got to be able to get to uh the place. He's done that with all of our playground, and you'll see. Uh so it's it's been a breadth of fresh air that I have aboard. Uh Temple, West Temple Skate Park. I don't know if you've been out there at West Temple Park. You've seen kids on it. This is another great story. If you remember, I'll remind somebody, because uh you aren't here, where we put Miller Skate Pad in. We picked that up from a city in uh Tennessee, uh an old parks uh superintendent and I flew out there. Might have been, I don't know if Glenn was here or the previous person, that they they subscribe to this uh intranet of purchasing people. And this one community said, hey, we put in a brand new playground. We put it next to a community back back to houses that day. And they went crazy. They had to pull it out. And they're just trying to take bids on who would come in, you know, get it off their hands. And our parks guys loaded up, uh they took our offer, loaded all up, got U-Hauls and came all the way back with it. And that playground at that time was sixty, seventy-five thousand dollars. And so that's how we got the first one. This one came from, we got a call from uh Fort Hood back in two thousand eighteen and said, hey, uh we're redoing our uh plan. Uh we do not have a need for this. We've been calling around to other cities. Nobody wants it. Um would you be interested? So Chuck and I and some others drove out. And sure, we'll take it off your hands. And we've had it for a while. We just had it right at the right time, get the money for the slab and everything. So they put it in, repainted everything, and they're up and going out of West Temple Park.
Are they seeing a lot of activity out? Lot of activity out there?
I have only been by once and seen it. Uh but Jeff said he's seen it and then the staff goes by and said there's, it seemed like there's always kids over.
That's great.
Lots of kids out there. I saw a bicycle the other day.
Yeah, that you know.
Bikes get on there? They allow bikes?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't stop. I just saw him riding a bike on me.
You didn't arrest him?
Why? The band from Parks.
You're members of the budget line item, and I cannot remember what year it's programmed into our budget. Uh but uh the budget is to put a cover over the skate pad at Miller. So that will have to now get thrown into, and it's already told me we don't know money to be here. So uh so that it will eventually need to be covered. Uh and so you just, you know, you're skating. Sometimes you do have to touch that hot metal, but you you know, up at the top or whatever. So in the middle of summer, it does get pretty hot. Hopefully playground, this one I've been about more. Um I always see people out here at this one. So uh this is the this is only our second playground that has the artificial turf now. Uh Oak Creek Park is the other one. Uh this is uh another that's turned out really well. Uh Waterfront Park, I did have a good picture of the uh Cold Creek to show, you know, old versus new. But this is uh uh this is a, this is a pretty sad playground, as you would call it, for, you know, the community. And that's what uh we were able to put in. And Brittany, have you been to that?
I have not.
I thought this was not one of your favorite parks.
Uh it's the, it is one of the closest parks to me, but the previous playground structure was really especially when Preston was a little bit younger. She was pretty much a daredevil. And it's a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit hard to see from the old picture, but that once, that really the playground was a slide. A very steep slide. And so we couldn't really frequent that part, because she'll jump off it or something. And so that's much better. We'll have to go out there and give it a try.
Couldn't really go away, did it?
She is still a daredevil, but she's a little bit older daredevil. So I probably would have let her play on that slide right now, but thankfully Kevin's got it replaced for me, so.
Uh another great one, uh does anybody frequent out at Miller's? Take a walk, whatever. You need to go out now. It is, it is fantastic. Uh I went out long, long after, we're probably ninety-nine percent done. You see, it's right here. Uh we've got some of this fencing. Uh it looks farther away, but anywhere that we thought it was probably a little bit too close to the edge, that kids would uh uh you know, want to step off, even though we had never had it before. Uh we've gotten a little bit more fencing to put up, and then we'll be completely done. When I've been out there, people walking their dogs, uh it's uh it's it's great. There's actually a picnic table uh under that or one or two under that uh little pavilion now. Uh it's great. If you haven't been, uh take a walk out there, get to the the overlook. And it's 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 great. And if you ever have the opportunity to go walk in the trail, uh you you, the first time Chuck and I ever went out, a long, long time ago. You think you're, you know, forced somewhere, you're like, we're not in the middle of uh a city. There's no way. There's no traffic. You don't have nothing except the birds and stuff. It's a fantastic community. And it's a great partnership with the City of Belton and the US Army Corps also. Uh a couple of other things we do, you know, we have the Art in the Park pieces. Uh when someone don't make something, our parks guys do a lot of the install work. And here's uh two more uh projects of their handiwork. Having put in the honor of uh uh Bill Jones.
Where's that?
New projects.
Kevin, where where's the one from Mayor Jones?
Oh, this is uh this Temple.
That makes sense.
And they both are actually.
Very nice.
Yeah. Uh and then uh hey, this is already gone. Uh you guys have already voted on this, correct, Chuck? Uh we got a lot of damage. We're still, you know, still picking up pieces from the tornado. And so it's been a long overdue. They're working on that and uh hopefully all that part will be repaired next uh spring. Another one that uh we are currently working on is Von Rosenberg Park, uh twenty-three oh five is up here. Uh and so uh you see the, this is this is on the the uh, I know you want to name it some different brand. This is on the Hobpen Creek. Uh 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 creek right here. This is the trail, ten foot wide. The interior will be six foot. Uh uh maybe in the future we'll have, I think, there were some exercise stations, but not right now. And then we see a lot of people practicing out there in that area where that's rectangular area. It's not the levelist. So part of this project is to level it out for them, so they have a place to to practice in the community. And then uh also at the the area here where the playground is, we'll be putting uh shape structure over that playground.
Jessica, that's one of those field areas that you and I were talking about earlier today, where, you know, teams are just finding spots to practice and um so we're trying to do what we can to to help make the the spaces um a little bit more accommodating. And for the record, Kevin, I have no problem with Hobden Creek Trail. I said we shouldn't call it Poison Oak Trail, just 'cause you know, nobody want to walk on Poison Oak Trail. I don't know. I'm not in charge of naming. Not, not my field set.
Area when I was naming subdivisions, it was, I couldn't go by anything.
Couldn't do the natural features. So I apparently we're accepting naming suggestions for a trail.
Yes. Uh another one that's uh uh finally getting uh ruined some legs, uh hopefully next uh next break we'll have it done. But uh uh that's incredible that lifted, that's the actual structure, you know, before. And then that's how it ended up in the creek and parks guys came in uh uh and at least put up some temporary fencing so that people could cross uh and that that would be nice to return that back to the the community over there. Here's another sad story. You know, this is the the Springer Park. Over time, we pull stuff out. Uh even Chuck reminded me said, Kevin, we've got to do something down here. This is just think about from Whistle Stop all the way to MLK. Everything's new. Look at this. It's horrible, right? And so he grabbed uh uh some pictures of of some items that uh may not be that exact thing, but that's the kind of thing we'll be replaced it with. But it's gotta, we've got to do something down there. Uh so I'm glad he uh reminded all of us. This is a horrible image in terms of quality. Uh this already went to, you guys already voted on this, is the playground that's going out at Lions Park, but it's a it's one of the on the on the rise upcoming things. And then that'll be next. Uh April, here's the uh, this one is on the council for two. Not, uh this is the one that we had to pull off because of product availability. I love how Brittany said that last time. Uh that's true. And this still doesn't do it uh justice. Uh it's actually brighter than this. Uh uh when you, when you look actually at the sample of the color, very bright. Uh their computer software, they need to update or something, because it does not look like the color that it's gonna be. So it's gonna be brighter, much, much brighter. Uh in a customized piece for uh Temple for sure. So it'll it'll all be fine now. So we're all in the comfort zone.
Kevin, is it gonna have that climbing net?
Yep. Everything you see, the only thing you don't see on here is uh the uh the sports uh challenge course on the other side of the playground. That it'll have artificial turf under it.
That's perfect for Preston right there.
The artifact that.
No, this this climbing, this this, this is her, this she spends a lot of time here. Probably both.
That's that's not a climbing net on the outside.
It depends.
And it will, I I will tell you, this is uh, so you go down uh, Adam, so if you're headed out of town, you're gonna see this one. You're coming down Avenue H, the other one that's kind of becoming is uh Jones Park. So you're gonna have two high-visibility uh playgrounds and parks that everybody drives by. Uh it'll, it's gonna be great, great, great. Uh continual uh they just wrapped up uh the regionals and and uh Ranger, so Carl's one that's not the uh one that I said that yet. No, not yet. I can't say, sorry. Uh Carl and Ranger uh got second place. Uh they've been getting first. I'm not sure what happened this year, but they got, they got second. I have to, I have to talk to them, but uh uh they got that. And then uh uh he's not up in that picture, but Jacob got in the zero term. And they'll be headed down to Corpus to represent us at the state uh competition. And now Carl, okay, so at the same meeting where, you know, they recognized Clarice since the other other stuff earlier. So Carl uh was a Parks uh Employee of the Year. So another great uh hard work. Uh and uh I mean, when you, the amount of time this guy puts in for us, uh shorthanded a lot of times. And so when you, when you read the, what they wrote on him, how could you not give it to him? Because it's uh uh he gives his soul to the the city of the department. So he's, we're very lucky to have him.
Kevin, do you remember how long Carl's been here? A long time, right?
It's been a while, yeah. How long has that? But I bet he came maybe four years after me, maybe? Maybe twenty-one years, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. He's been, been a great employee. We're lucky to have him.
Yeah, I mean, so uh so here we have uh uh so so these are our Wilson Park staff, there's Malik, there's Haley. Uh also, if you don't know, this is Katie Henderson's daughter, Katie Henderson in uh Transportation. And then that uh Snatch Paper, and this is one of the uh the youth in the council. So now, any questions before my last slide? I said, I'm circling back around. I know I've been waiting. Any questions on this presentation?
I think that's BJ Little's daughter. Is that right? Yeah, Billy, that's right.
Hey, I'm not gonna see you for a while, probably, you know, till, because, you know, things are coming up. So happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Good, thank y'all.
You're taking a lot of time off. You're taking a lot of time off. We're not gonna see you live for the New Year.
Well, that's just the front of the quarter. Can you believe it? Thanksgiving is next week, Mayor. What do we have for Thanksgiving? I'll be over.
Keep coming to the PD, because you're gonna do a lock door.
General Services update, uh Purchasing, Facility Services, and Destruction Services. Those are the three divisions that represent our department. So first of all, purchasing real quick, um ten people really um uh take care of things in this area, teaching procurement, along with purchasing duties, along with a warehouse that is managed also. So a great team here. Uh very proud of this team. Um it's part of our high-forming organization. Uh focus area, um we've got our three third consecutive year of achieving the uh Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, which is a national award. And there's only like a hundred in the nation that are awarded this. So very proud of this team for uh the work they do. It really is intense. It it really makes you look hard at your controls and everything. So it's not just something where you're, you're really just recommending uh someone because uh hey, they they look good. Uh there, there's lots of things that go into this. So really proud of them for that. Um as we discussed at last council workshop, uh we're working on on December fourth. You'll see. Um as we discussed at last council workshop, uh we're working on on December fourth. You'll see our council agenda. For recommendation to change our our purchasing policy to comply with the new state laws. Uh we're working with uh Rady uh Hairston, our Assistant Director's Leadership on our procedures. Uh that will plan to implement everything in January. Moving on to Facility Services, which covers uh facility maintenance and custodial services. This is our small but mighty team. Um I've been over facilities now for nine years and I think this is. Strongest team we've we've had. I'm just really pleased. It's a solid team. So. We've got Tony Zavala, our Facility Service Division Director, James Mark, who's been with the the city um many years and then uh three. Uh maintenance techs um that are taking care of about seven hundred thousand square foot of building space. So well, we're very much understaffed in this area. Uh Wesley Hutton is our journeyman electrician that's on board. It's just a rock star. And then. Our our most recent addition is our HVAC technician. It's um it's not who, it's Phil. Um so um anyway, but they're all just um just can't say enough about out proud and and pleased I am with this team right now. But there's so much to do too.
Are the are the electrician and the HVAC, are those new?
They are, they're not new positions, but these are the two newest additions, yes, to our team.
We've talked about the need.
Yep, yep.
They're not new positions.
No, they're not.
Plumber wish the new one that we talked about. And then we talked about adding a technician. To each of those teams, but these two have been funded. They're just new hires for.
Okay.
You had turnover and there's there's new people in those positions, but they're not new.
And I was thinking about the plumber position.
Yeah, the plumber.
Plumber, no. Um and and it's it's hard. It was hard to build these two. So I feel so fortunate. As to who we have in this world right now, but um really we need a second HVAC technician. Uh really could put one to use very easily. So but it's just, it's hard to get one.
And Blenda Simmons. Not not struggling in this room. Didn't Steve uh recently win the citywide?
Uh Steve, uh we uh started a new program this year. Um it was called a Rising Star. And Steve Peters, who's been with the city, I think around fifteen years or so, he's retired military. Um he got the uh employee Rising Star of the Year Award. So I'm real proud of him. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, that was nice.
I see him all over town. So he's he's.
Well, and his focus area and his buildings are in the central part. So a lot, really, he's our go-to guy for City Hall. Uh the other thing that he has a skill in, he actually is, I don't know if he wants a license, but he's a lot better. So uh we're have recognized recently, based on our leadership in this department, that when he, Steve retires, that is gonna be. Uh somebody will really get a great miss. And we, it's not a day point that's go by that he doesn't do something with lots.
We see him at the Love Yard a bunch and he's always just upbeat and enjoyable.
Absolutely, absolutely, great guy.
And the new program that uh People Operations is leading has um just folks being able to nominate. Uh their coworkers or or team members who are, you know, demonstrate our our organizational values and are are committed to service and. Um so we do that on a quarterly basis. And then once a year, from those winners of the the quarterly uh awards, then. Uh I get to pick the um the the annual kind of the 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 uh employee. Uh of the year, if you will. And so I think we had, you know, maybe, I don't know, twelve or fifteen quarterly non uh or quarterly winners. Um and we had a lunch a few weeks ago. And um Steve, of course, he didn't know, he knew he would have won the quarterly award. They they. They celebrate that throughout, you know, as the as the quarter goes by. But he had no idea that he was, he was gonna be named Employee of the Year. And his wife came with him to lunch. And I just love that. That was just such a a nice lunch. And they're they're both, yeah, they're both such great people and. Um so uh happy that, just, I mean, I think that's just a, he he is a poster child for the type of employee that um. That is, you know. We want to have and that we do, we have, we have so many people who just have the heart for service. And um Steve is is right there at the top. So. Always willing to do whatever.
Absolutely. The other thing I'll point out in that program too, it's not like James Mark. Indominate Steve for that that role. It has to be a peer, someone at your same level. So Elias nominated Steve. And so I just thought that was awesome. Um but that happened and um how Elias um. Took the time and recognized the the input and value that Steve gives too. So that's a lot about that is awesome. Um custodial services, we um we're we're at the same level here. Gary Zaruba is over this, these teams. We have a crew. This is our two AM crew, starts at two AM in the morning. And they get off at ten thirty. And then we've got a crew for. Uh if you're in the downtown area, Police Department, City Hall and so forth, that's a crew you can, you'll see, we call them the Sunrise Crew, cause they start at five o'clock. And then we have our Sunset Crew. They work Tuesday through Saturday and they start at eleven o'clock. So they're catching the things on the backend. And then doing some deep cleaning things that we can't do during the week on Saturdays. But uh the challenge is based on the growth of square footage. Our ability to use that team like it's intent with deep cleaning has kind of diminished. But. We're trying to just, I I I challenge the leaders, we gotta work smarter. Maybe we don't have to take out trash from everybody's desk every day and so forth. So we can still, we've gotta attend to these things. So we've got to. To make sure that we're working smarter, not harder to to keep things going. Onto Construction Services. This will be the focus of my time. I want to give you a CIP to update. So. Austin Maxwell is our Construction Services Division Director. He's with us uh today. Um can't say enough about how much I value Austin and. His technical abilities and understanding of buildings. And then we have two uh project managers, Brittany Benite and Jordan Peel. Uh this is a great team, solid team. Um first of all, I want to just give you a quick update on completed projects. Uh we completed since the last time we met, the Service Center Building A Expansion and Renovation Project. So this is the Traffic Signal Lab that you see here. If you haven't had a tour of this expansion yet, um the uh new break room area, expanded break room, there really was just like a, almost a twelve by twelve. Room previously, so much better that way. Uh the training room and then just an example of the work areas, the open workspaces. But. Uh very pleased with how this building uh has come out and um gets everybody back together in the standpoint of Public Works Administration. Completed project in the building that we're in right now. Not everything's done here, but we're we're inching along. Uh we have replaced the roof and that's what this uh photo here is depicting. Uh these used to be green blocks right up here and we changed those to blue, to a tupper blue color um to reflect our. Um colors. Um the facade has all been done. There was some hail damage over the years that needed to be corrected. To, so we have a watertight building. That was done as far as that. And then we have up updated, it was not reflected in this drawing piece. The two, the twenty-five ton and the thirty-five ton units on the top of the roof, that's uh that is all been done there.
What was the original budget on this?
Well.
Do you remember?
Um we've got, we've got like two hundred to three hundred thousand, I think, left in what we originally allocated for improvement.
About a billion and a half is what stuck in my mind, the center.
Yeah, that confirms. I think that's about right.
I don't know precisely, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's it. So we came in at Earl Blow.
Yep. These three things here that we've completed, we knew when we purchased the building that there was issues. So our plan was to get these done immediately. So those are the three. Three things that are done. The other thing I do want to point out in this picture, you can notice if you didn't know, this is a more historic building. The building, actually not where we're getting. Here, this used to be a drive-through, but you can see the old brick along the top. Uh we had to do some things to correct lashing and so forth along um the parapet wall there. But you can see the older, that was an older building. And then they added on to the first floor side there. Another thing we've completed, solid waste pit repairs is done, thank goodness. And that is working much better than it was. You can see this is what. We had and then this is what's happened now that it was corrected. Uh one thing, this isn't a big project, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh um this is up bend of the river, that house. You know, when you walk in and this floor and you have to watch your step, cause hey, don't trip on the linoleum that's coming up. And we really didn't know what we want to do with it. We didn't want to invest a lot of money, cause we didn't know what's been happening in this house. But in the end, we ended up just deciding to invest. A little over twenty thousand dollars that we upgraded the flooring. Uh so instead of the linoleum now, that's a trip hazard, we now have. Um ceramic uh tile throughout. So that's just the picture of how the top part came out. And this is how the bottom part came out. So much more, I think Kevin's back to ready the facility again. Uh before, we had just closed it. We just said, no, it's it's not good. But um we feel like we've got a facility now that. Um it it, you know, it's not totally updated, but at least we don't have um dangerous uh flooring in it. So.
Could you go back to the Service Center uh uh right there? At some point, we need an update. Is this done, done? Completed?
Everything?
Yeah.
If the pit is done, but there's still um a couple of issues. We're still addressing.
Communication is improving with the.
We actually.
We're moving along as as we should. Yeah, is that correct?
Say that again?
We are moving along as we should, as they should. We're getting open communication with the contractors.
We are.
And we're getting some resolution. Maybe not finished projects, but some resolution on issues.
We're we're gaining direction and momentum. We actually had a meeting yesterday, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Do do we need to have a? An an another meeting with council about that? Or are we having?
That probably would be best.
Say again?
That probably would be best.
Okay.
So uh other uh or completed storm-related projects from the tornado, um airport head force canopy has been totally re-skin. Uh library roofs uh structure, I guess, needed it so bad. And so this is how it kind of looks now, though I should have taken a picture, gotten a picture with. Showing the bottom um last along with the top, but it's so much better than it was. Uh the Parks Administration facade has been been fixed from the hail damage service center east wall and just multiple roofs um throughout the building. The only thing we're down to now is really things that we're uh duck, we're waiting on resolution and agreement with uh TML. Uh risk pool. Um but we're, we've got everything done that we can get done. Other completed projects, we updated the uh my the IT data center upgrade on the seventh floor City Hall. Uh the the City Hall now has a fire alarm system that didn't have previously. Uh the police, um this one is a one hundred percent complete, but it's close. We keep saying that. The PD. HVAC control system upgrade that included, we have VADs throughout that building. And Max back there and Max gonna say, no, it's not done. But we're 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 close, right?
It's very close.
Uh Major Horn Center HVAC Control System got done uh recently. Uh they've been fighting on a system that was very antiquated. And you had to be sitting right in front of an old computer that was like thirty years old. Uh so we're um very pleased that that got done. So now we have some. A some HVAC control system out there and the Fire Marshal Office Evidence Storage, this is at Central Fire. It's not a great picture, but just that's what this is reflecting. Gober Party House. I don't, I went back and I don't think I gave you an update on this, but I don't know if Bryn did. But do you guys, do you know why it's called Gober Party House? And I have, you guys haven't heard this. So um it goes back to nineteen forty-five. Um and actually, it was seniors in high school, in Temple High School, that said, we need a place for kids to go. And we know we're seniors in high school, but we want to leave. We want to be the drivers to get something for our people following behind us. So they have a place to go. Kids didn't have a place to. And so that's how it got its name, Gober Party House. Um and this is Dr. Gober, is who it's named after. I don't know if he was a big contributor or not to it, or just the fact that his term. As President of uh Scott and White um Head Physician, Santa Fe Hospital Chief Physician was his title. So it was right next door to Gober Party House. So I think that has some significance to it. But ultimately, they needed ten thousand dollars is what they were looking for. And you can see the design of it, what they, this is before it was, you know, constructed, but it really, that's how they built it. That's what it looks like. So. That was in nineteen forty-five. And then um it became a youth center also. So it was a party house, but then they also add the element of it being a youth center also. Um and then in nineteen eighty-eight, you can see, this is when I saw this picture and Kevin showed this to me. It's like, oh my gosh, look at those rafters. It's like, and we've got the drop ceilings and um so forth. So this is what it looked like, I believe, right before nineteen eighty-eight. And so forth. And then you can see where they put the drop ceiling in as part of that renovation, I believe. And then the outside, this is when they added the front. Kind of foyer to the building on the south side of the building and the sidewalk going around it and so forth. Um and this is what it looks like today. And uh Kevin already brought up the beautiful kitchen. That's in here and so forth. That's that's all there is. That's all there is. The wood floors look beautiful. But there's, they've been sanded so many times that they're they're and they're at the end of their life. Um and then that's the office space in there. And I really think that's dated back to when it was probably originally built. Almost. They put paneling in the wall, maybe on the seventies. I don't know. But um anyway, we finished a master plan. We wanted to understand what's the vision. What what do we want this to become and so forth. And we really can't do anything until we get some direction or another space on it. And. We have to get the the funding budgeted for it. But I did want to share what the master plan shows. And it says, um we need to replace the families that go in the exterior. The 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 exterior is in bad shape. Uh we need to get that done. We need to upgrade the electric service and lighting. We need to upgrade the roof to allow to open up the rafters. Um new restrooms, cause currently they're not ADA, they're in bad shape. We need to uh do new windows throughout, repair the foundation. Um building addition to the south. So basically, when you walk in, um this is pillar architecture that did this, but their vision is open the south. Or the north side up with windows and and create an outdoor kind of patio area is what they're suggesting. It made a lot of sense. And then you can see here also there's a smaller meeting room up on the upper right, covered patio. And you could call it a bridal suite, but it. Doesn't necessarily need to be that, but that could be another meeting room or whatever. And then all the restrooms to this end, instead of splitting them. A bigger uh storage space and a much, an actual kitchen in the building. So. Anyway, that's what the vision is. Uh cost-wise, what they're saying, we need to probably do this in today's dollars, about one point six million dollars. So. Uh but again, it'd be nice, but this is being so heavily used right now because of our shortage of Sammons Community Center. Um. That's what it's at.
So it's gonna be overlooking the recycle?
Well, we're looking at. But actually expensive that we're actually envisioning to, where you could do a width vent on the backside of the lot, so that might be a. More of a secured like outdoor setting back there instead of.
I think actually at the central location, we need more places like that for people to rent and and have events. Um that Dr. Gober, he didn't look like much of a partyer, I don't know. Party house.
Leave him alone.
Yeah, okay.
So.
To look like.
That's right.
No.
So point six million. And then Sammons is rebuilt. What's that building gonna be used for?
I think this building was heavily used even.
Did a lot of cripples.
Yeah, we had kids, I have birthday parties there. I know we went to a number of them and graduation parties. So.
It really is a party house.
Yeah.
Rent it or advance bridal showers, um things like that is what it, I would say. And then like the Lions Club meets there. Um so, you know, civic club meetings, but just.
This looks so nice with the the vaulted ceiling and.
Probably cover that up with the.
But I think we did, we would basically, more energy efficient, cause you wouldn't have to heat and cool all that space. But now we can put insulation. Layer on the roof, so, yeah. All right, on to projects we have under construction. So uh Santa Fe Community Market is nearing completion. Uh that was an area up in the upper right that was um taken in the middle of October, probably a month ago. Uh there was a loading dock in the back of the facility in the warehouse part that's now been built in that we really considered that a safety hazard. So we're glad. That there, the investments on board supported that. And this photo right down here was taken yesterday. So you can see the flat work and everything happening here. Um so um this project is very much nearing completion. Uh Kevin's already touched on Lions Junction, the guard building. I think we've got almost the same picture here on the right and he showed you where it's at. So. Uh this is just kind of the floor plan of it though, is as he said, this was be kind of a multi. Be kind of a multi-purpose, but the big window looking out this way onto the park itself. And then we'll have a storage area with a nice machine in it, along with a small office for the manager that we currently don't have onsite either. Uh historic post office, um. This project um started out as an H V A system upgrade, we added to that also electrical, once we got into H V A, we had to do electrical. We knew knew that we needed to upgrade the elevator, which we have done. And then it led to uh res- renovation and restoration. Um this project was, should have been completed probably by now. Uh the estimated completion now is in June of twenty twenty-six. But uh I don't know if I've showed you these photos before, but this was back in nineteen twelve, when it was originally constructed. And this, when I was trying to look for kind of the inside picture, this is the only one that Craig Ordner can help me find, but that's the inside. Lobby of the facility, so uh we want to just preserve as much as we can. This project is um has been a journey, and it is a journey. There's been lots of obstacles, we uh first thing I think we encountered was unsupported plaster ceilings where the H V A guys were working and actually a big piece of plaster fell. Um so that was an issue, basement and elevator pit were filling up with water. Um basement exterior, basically what we we determined was the exterior vapor barrier on the outside of the basement wall had. It was at the end of its life, it was all cracked and not doing what it needed to do anymore, we've since found out that's asbestos containing. So um we're planning, we have a contract that we're going to execute soon to basically remove that and put that down right. Um elimination of internal gutter system, when we replaced the roofs last um August, we didn't think the internal gutter system was working. It ends up though um that it it was doing some good, because after that guy basically um. Uh roofed over the top, um and basically we got so much rain onto the east side of the building with the spring rains, it just started flooding the building. And then as of late, we've had an exterior, just unrelated to the building, an exterior water uh supply line of line leak. And then we've lost electricity for six months, we turned off at the end of April uh electricity to do tightens for that new H V A system. And then we did not understand, but on course, no, we're not turning the power back on. Because you have to do, the transformer is not up to our standards, and so you need to upgrade the electrical service, so. We had some challenges there, it took six months. Uh but finally, we're back up and running again with temporary power. So our current game plan is uh continue previously uh contracted electrical and H V A services, we're moving again on the project. Uh the new transformer should be in 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 January or. Uh February, and we're going to be installing the pad mount instead of a full mount transformer this time. We're proceeding with uh plans for renovations to make a space efficient for plan for district services to transform Temple. And housing and community development on the second floor. We need to repair the plaster walls and paint throughout. Upgrade the flooring to better reflect the uh building's historical character, that's here. Where it really bothers me when I walked in, and I think maybe Temple College did this, but it just doesn't give. The the fact that for how pretty this building is, so. We're gonna do something with tile to at least try to bring out in the character of the building. And we're working with the architect to do that. We want to preserve restrooms, we've got two restrooms that you missed, this looks pretty old, and yet you just tear it out, but it's really cool, it's got some. Marble in marble walls and stuff, so we're gonna try to bring back to life. Not taking out these fix fixtures, but actually preserve this bathroom on the first floor, and there's another one. A little bit bigger on the second floor, so we want to do that. And we want to create a secondary exit on the second floor, it's not that we. Well, yeah, we do, because we want our this building to be safe. Currently, there's only one way to get out, and so there's gonna be a fire exit that we're gonna have to create on the exit, on the. East side of the building, and as I've already alluded to, we want to mitigate the basement water infiltration issues, so a lot's going on. And will be going on, and most likely, actually, you have an agenda item, I think, that's submitted. Uh for your consideration on December fourth, not tonight's agenda. So uh we got several projects that are in the kickoff phase, these are authorized and support by y'all. And we're just waiting or or planning out the kickoff, so as you authorized at your last council meeting. Uh the police classroom and indoor shooting range buildings. Uh the groundbreaking ceremony um is ten at the police table for Wednesday, December third at nine o'clock. Uh we're anticipated to start construction on this building around December fifteenth, with an estimated completion in May of twenty twenty-seven. Um and then the awarded construction value on this was a little over fourteen million dollars, uh this is just. As Austin presented at council last time, uh some inter- interior renderings of that facility. Recently awarded contracts that were ready to kick off is uh the H V A chiller replacement. Um chillers on top of the police station. Uh the J D clinics complex, which is the midas port and utility business office and houses. Uh customer care on the second floor, we're doing a backup generator. Uh as important as that department is, if we have power outage, we certainly don't want that that department to go down, so. Hopefully, that will all be completed in January, and then fire station six, we're just uh correcting, uh doing our best. What we can with the envelope and H V A improvements to make sure we've got an environmentally um clear and safe building um at fire station six. Uh recently awarded construction contracts, police west side substation, this is it right here. It was impacted by the tornado, the roof was basically peeled off, and so we finally had plans. Uh where we did some reconfigurations and stuff to make it better for the patrol unit um for P D. Um and then we also, you have authorized a contract to create an awning on the west side of the flea building, this is out at. Uh next to the land bill and service center building B. Uh we, that's gonna be very important for us to get going that um night shift and so forth, and to get more. Out and productivity out of the fleet department, you have more space where they can work. And then uh city secretary suite, um this was on the council agenda last week, we're gonna do a small renovation. On the uh southeast corner of city hall for the city secretary, so. Uh that project will kick off the week after Thanksgiving, construction wise. On your December fourth council agenda, there'll be an item for city hall annex third floor adverse for renovations. Uh in the estimated amount of one hundred and seventy thousand. Uh our plan in this building third floor, kind of what, as Bryn will say. Not really their permanent home, but where their home should be for a long time is people operations on the third floor. And then we need to create an office for strategy and innovation in the corner uh of this floor right here. And then the L R E building, which is the old terminal building at the airport with the blue roof, come down damage, and we have a contract. That will be on your December fourth agenda to get the interiors done for that buildings. Projects under design, um Kevin alluded to, or can't remember, Pepper Creek Trail restroom facility, so there's currently a porta potty if you want Pepper Creek Trail. And so what we want to do with that restroom facility is, this project is actually overbid. However, we're cutting in a holding pattern because there was an oversight of where the electricity is coming from. So um we're working through some things on this one, but ultimately, we're um, we should hopefully have revised. Plans and and get this project moving again.
As I said, Pepper Creek Walker, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. Uh on to uh new fire station seven, this is at Adams Avenue and Clyde Night Grove Boulevard and and West Temple, so this is the rendering. This is what it should look like pretty much when we get done, we're very close to completing design on this. Uh there is a almost a final meeting yesterday uh to go over these plans, that's just a rendering of what the kind of day room kitchen area. Or actually, kitchen area will look like in the station, so that's what, but what the idea was to really pull from the other buildings in the area. Uh is what we tried, the architect tried to do, and we felt like they did a fantastic job.
Who is the architect?
Uh B R N W, our class of college station. Uh fire station two, uh we have an awarded contract with them, and again, this design is almost complete, we're adding on about four hundred square feet to the east end of this. Facility, basically what we're trying to do is add uh private uh bedrooms, and also instead of just having one. Uh restroom facility that uh for everybody, males and females, we're creating two separate. Uh so we have that uh multi-gender um capabilities uh to have everybody housed out of here. And then we're also adding on a gear storage area on the the um east or west side of the building. But this project too is, we're very close to putting this one out for competitive sale proposals also. And funding is there to do that one. Fire station four is very similar to fire station two in the needs that we're going to do with it, we just kicked off design on it. Design should be complete in April, and hopefully we can kick off a bidding process after that to get this one moving also. Uh first responder drone docking platform, so Austin's really um helped out on this one. Um I think what happened was the contractor that's gonna do these docking stations, what they're used to is that. Wherever you want to put these drones strategically, there's a flat roof. Um that you can put it on, well, we don't have that. So basically, one that we're able to use is Parks Administration Building, so our plan is to put one of the drones, three drones. On uh the Parks Administration Building uh north roof. Uh but fire station four and seven strategically, that's where they need to go, but there's no city buildings out there, there are schools, but then the access. To get into those buildings and stuff, when the school's not in session creates problems, so. Uh what we're doing right now is making plans and working with a structural engineer to design. A platform, an elevated platform, something like what you're seeing here to the right. Um the platform is basically twenty by thirty. Um that's what's required, currently, the uh the unit itself is only around four hundred pounds, but these units are gonna be upgraded to about eight hundred pounds. Um so um and then you have to have an emergency landing place, so even though you've got the docking station here, this opens up. Opens and closes and lets the drone in. Um you also have to have the radar tower and so forth, and you have to have it at a height. In order to get the the connections, the communications to it, so. This is what we're posing as a solution um to it, and uh that's what we're planning currently to construct at fire station four. And the current fire station seven.
How far does that have to be? Uh ten foot above the roof ridge for the for the the communication tower. Um the the deck is gonna be roughly thirty feet up there. So it's gonna be a pretty size, I mean, it's a small structure, but it's gonna be up there with it.
I know Austin doesn't know, but I sent you an email, we just got an email. Uh an hour ago, we said, well, parks probably not gonna work anymore.
Yeah, very.
You have the email.
That'd be fun, more else.
We might have to do a third.
Yeah, I've already got the, we're working on it, so it it's a. How you face replication.
It's been a very. Much bigger project than.
Yeah, I think it started out that everybody thought it was just really small, like, hey, we can just see. It's like, what's the big deal, it's well. It has to be at a certain height and, you know.
There's more things that are in play than just throwing it on the ground, unfortunately.
And the funding for the actual, the drones, etc., that's all grants, right?
That was grants, yes.
I bet those platforms aren't grants.
Who what?
Bet those platforms aren't grants.
They're not.
So the ones in the videos that were on the ground, they had a tower with the radar somewhere or? Yes, yeah, there has to be a radar station along with a uh also a communication tower, the radar has to be able to bounce. I'm I don't know all the information as far as how they work, but the it has to be high enough off the ground to communicate and also pick up any traffic, bird flight, all these different. Uh things that come into play as the drone comes in and out. Um so it's, it's just not as easy to slap it on the ground, unfortunately.
It's not what they sold us.
No, that's not what the. How much are they to tower? As of.
Sixty.
Yeah, as of right now, I'm working through that, I'm kind of cutting down some of the costs on the metal, um. I I will know better numbers, I'm only one that's outstanding right now is I need a geotech for uh station seven. I should have an idea of just how many peers. All, this is gonna be, the the idea stays the same, but the the amount of peers in the metal is gonna shrink, so I'm gonna cut that. So somewhere in the area of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty.
For all, all of together, yes, or?
All of, yeah.
Well, that's for two.
But I will, I will work.
Sixty minutes.
Our uh power requirements are minimal, it's just what they require work these things out, and they evidently flock love them so much. They want to have a P R team come down here when they are built, so they can say, hey, this is the first we've ever seen these. I know.
It was a twenty thousand dollar fee.
I I agree, very stupid.
All right, um park campus expansion, so this is our parks and rec administration office along the interstate here, and so we're under design to. Build some additional much-needed storage in the back area here, so funding is available. Uh for this project and design should be complete in December, and we'll hopefully be bringing forward to you in March or so, our recommendation for a word of a contract.
We're gonna build some of the flat roof. Yeah, history, yeah.
Yeah, there are, there's no other flat roof out here.
Oh, no.
One thing I can think about is May Warren Hook.
It's outside of the coverage, we never even thought about that also.
Um this little update on city hall attic plenum stabilization and third floor renovation, so. Um we have proceeded, currently we have out a request for proposals uh to engage a construction manager at risk. We actually had the pre-submitting conference this morning, had a relative, we had a few contractors, so we're anxious to see what. Their proposals come in at, but the idea is that a construction manager at risk will work. Hand in hand with the design team during the design process to make sure. What the designer, the structural engineer is saying he wants to do, and if it's feasible to do or not, so that's the reason we felt this approach was. Was very um worthy of this project, so. Uh we anticipate uh coming to you with a recommendation for a word of a C M R S contract in Jan- on January fifteenth is our goal. Um our design and construction projected timeline, and Austin will tell me, it's like, Blinda, you might be optimistic on this. Um but April of twenty twenty-six, final design complete, uh May-June will bid it, that that's being the construction manager at risk will bid. Uh July twenty twenty-six, council award of a guaranteed maximum price proposal. And then August uh twenty twenty-six through January twenty twenty-six, uh construction, so. Um this was one.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty thousand, I said the, I had that the wrong thing out there. So this is one month longer from what I reflected, but and often thanks to.
I don't have, I'm out of message.
Yeah, this is a cool picture, though, I didn't show you this picture though before. Um Cole Smith and I, he found this, but this is looking from the stage, and I'm looking back. At the the balcony and so forth, so um yeah, cool picture. We're assuming it probably was in the thirties or forties, the building was built in the late nineteen twenties. Uh and definitely was before they, in the late nineteen sixties, when they put the air conditioning plenum along this column. Not column, but um.
Sure, that's right. Those kids had somewhere to go.
I think it was a cool event, so, but it's a cool picture.
I can tell the kids were all across the school.
Yeah. Kathy said that was before fire marshal standards.
Yeah.
Fire hazard right there.
Uh projects with pending uh design contracts city hall, um and at seventh floor renovations, uh we're making some plans, working with. Uh Garcia architects to um do some design for the finance department over there. Uh summer recreation center improvement, um although they're not officially executing since the. Uh structural engineer was in town this morning for the present middle conference, he actually did go to the summit this afternoon. Uh we have opened up the wall here. Um and it doesn't look, it doesn't have the root issue. Um that that this area did in red here, that's why it's red, but we still have some other issues, so. Uh more to come on that one, and you have, that's on your council agenda for December fourth, the contract amendment. Uh with with Jenny and Elsner that's helping us on that project. And then the last one that I think we're gonna schedule another time to talk about is Sammans Community Center, uh finalizing direction on it. So that is our update for general services, happy to answer any questions.
Anything? Been busy since the tornado, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, the first picture of me on there horrifies me every, I think that was the, I must have been like a day or two after the tornado, but I was on. About two hours of sleep, I think, right after I had. Looks a little rough, maybe orange.
Thank you, Melinda.
Absolutely, thank you.
Who's that? You can play the room, Nate.
All right, good afternoon, hearing council. So I'm having an identity crisis, sorry to go out. I'm either neighborhood services or housing and community development, it's your fault, you can call me whatever you want.
For the next how long?
For the next how long?
So this was our team. Uh we are now up to ten people. We hired a new uh case manager. And we're really excited to have her. She's a weekend now, uh as of today. And she keeps coming back, so I I think we're we're feeling pretty good about that. She has a lot of experience. Her her name's Sasha. Uh she has been like all over the place, literally. She moved to the United States from Jamaica and was a police officer in Jamaica. And then, and of course, uh dealing with with a lot of people experiencing homelessness there, providing them connections with resources and things like that. And then when she moved to the United States, she went to the military and did the same thing and connected soldiers to the resources. He got a degree in social work and now um ready to do, take that on from the civilian side. So we're super excited to have her. She's already hit the ground running and is doing great things already. So these are the primary focus areas or divisions uh within the uh department. We have Neighborhood Services and they really deal with a lot of the programs that that um help people who are experiencing housing instability and um issues with their homes maintenance-wise. They also do the home maintenance academy, which helps uh people learn how to repair their own homes. Uh the Good Neighbor Program and a lot of our volunteer-driven uh programming. We have our Neighborhood Engagement Team, which is really focused on the Love Where You Live Initiative and also uh Neighborhood Coalition Building and the Neighborhood Leadership Academy. Um our Homeland Services Division, and that includes a landlord engagement team of Mary uh who is an Army of One, if y'all haven't met Mary McGlorry, she's incredible. Uh and both of our case managers are also part of that team. Um so we're working on a variety of different initiatives with that that we're really excited about, and I'll give you more detail about this in a second. And then, of course, our Grant Management Team as well. They work with all inbound and outbound grants within the city that are not um those more complex like public works and tax dock grants. Uh so they've got their hands full with that. So just an overview, this is sort of a wrap-up of FY twenty-five and some of our successes from last fiscal year. We ended the year with twenty-nine Good Neighbor clients and fourteen, or eleven volunteers that serviced those uh those Good Neighbor clients. So it's, they were doubling up and some of them tripling up on on uh recipients of those services. But for those of you that are unfamiliar, the Good Neighbor Program is essentially a volunteer-driven program where we will identify clients within the community either through code compliance or by them just reaching out to us that can't take care of their lawn maintenance or some minor home repairs or things like that. Things that would expose them to potentially getting a uh citation from code compliance. So uh we will partner them up with a volunteer and also provide them with free equipment to use as well through the tool library. So if they have a lawn uh maintenance issue, we will uh provide the volunteer with the lawnmower fully gassed up and ready to go. They go out and take care of that for that client and then bring the lawnmower back. Uh so it has been a very, very successful program and helped a lot of folks that would otherwise take care of their issues if they could, but they just don't have the physical ability to do that. We hosted fourteen Team Up to Clean Up events. Uh this year, we've sort of switched our um methodology of getting those Team Up to Clean Up events organized. We have been partnering up with the dumpster drops and trying to coordinate events around the dumpster drops, but we didn't really have great participation from volunteers. So instead, we're switching it up and using the Neighborhood Coalitions to coordinate those uh events and get our volunteers involved, and that has been much, much better. A lot more participation from uh volunteers and just uh a lot more trash gathered. So that's been great. We closed forty-six hip cases this year as Housing Improvement Program, and there are just a variety of different roof replacements, foundation repair, plumbing, electrical, uh sheet rock, you name it. We even done some uh braiding on some lots that were experiencing some drainage issues. Uh but that program has been wonderful. And I've got infographics for you guys from our uh uh consolidated plan uh evaluation report that I'll hand to you. They have a little bit more information about that as well.
Is there still a limit, like the five thousand dollar limit on those home repairs?
No, sir. Well, yes, but it's not five thousand. We do up to fifty percent of the assessed value of the home and it's Bell County assessment.
Really?
Yes, sir.
And how? How big is that budget?
Uh we thought, I, well, it's all uh community development block and funding, and um so we have, I wanna say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left out of it. And then I'll just go ahead and give you guys this report too. Because it shows how much we spent on that third one last year. And it's a really pretty infographic. It's beautiful, that's always fun. Uh but according to this, we spent a hundred and sixty-two for thirteen last year. That is a combination of several program years though, because that that does sort of roll over from you to you. I'm sorry. And then, like I said, I think we've got about a hundred fifty thousand, but We also had eighteen Home Maintenance Academy graduates um this year, and those we've been doing quarterly and focusing on different topics. So we've been trying to hold the audiences at each one of them to see what types of things they would like to learn about. Um but they've covered sheet rock repair, and even like some roof repairs that they've done too, and they built a little mock roof and have shown them how to put shingles on. Um so uh that has been a lot of fun, and the people that go through the class are always so excited about it. So we are working on phase two of our Homeowner Assistance and Reconstruction Program. Uh this is the program that is funded by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, where we go into a home and um with the assistance of the grant, we deconstruct a home and then reconstruct a home on the same spot. And this is a client in phase two, and yes, she's actually living in this home still. Uh it does not have electricity to it. She has a generator on the porch, and it does not have plumbing either. The water's been turned off, the electrical has been turned off, and the um the power company won't turn it back on because it's such a hazard. Uh so she relies on her labor store water and her generator for electricity. We have gone out on bid twice for phase two, um with the, we started off with the plans that we did for phase one. And we were not able to find a contractor that was, that we'd build it within budget. Um so we went back to the drawing board with the engineers and architects and scaled it way back and cut a bunch of the the stuff out of it that we could and found as, you know, with bare bones and speak and make it, um while still being comfortable and um complying with head guidelines. Then back out again, still didn't have anyone that came back um with the price tip with the with a bid that was within budget. So at the same time, all of that's happening, um the um an opportunity came up to where we were able to consider manufactured homes or modular homes with Clayton. And um these are not your grandmother's, like, manufactured homes. They they're really, really nice, really well-made to HUD standards, and they look like a site-built home from the from the street. You couldn't tell that they're that they're uh manufactured homes. Um we're still sort of in the exploration phase of that, but the initial um numbers that are coming back from them are well within budget, and they're really, really nice homes. A group of us went to the the Clayton Manufacturing Plant in Waco and looked at how their construction methodologies and things like that. Really, really nice homes um that that we we feel would work well. Uh we haven't had internal conversations yet uh with our planning and development department. Uh but I have, I have talked to Aaron about getting that that process going. Um and so we'll we'll explore it further. Um but from what we're gathering so far, um we've got green lights and hoping that we'll be able to make that work.
You couldn't get a contractor within your price range, what about, there any way to partner with like Habitat for Humanity or anything like that?
So they have a different model. They require blood, sweat, and tears, sweat, sweat, effigy to go into it. And these clients don't have to integrate that that way. But that's a good question. So hopeful on this. I'm not, definitely not gonna give up. Um for our Grant Management Division, they've been very, very busy. Um they have applied for a little over five point five million dollars worth of grants and have uh been successful at getting awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't think all of them have come back yet, so it's not like we've got a no on the rest. Um we're still waiting uh for the outcome of some of those. Um but they've also been managing the Temple Community Partnership Program, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Fund, which is the Homeowner Assistance to Reconstruction Program funding and tenant-based rental assistance. So Belinda is our Neighborhood Coalition um sort of champion. She goes out and actively uh seeks new neighborhood champions in our neighborhood districts. We have twenty-five total neighborhood districts, and she's been successful at establishing ten uh neighborhood coalitions. So that's an ongoing thing with her that she's constantly um beating the bushes, and every time we do a new neighborhood plan, she's asking people if they wanna take that on uh in their neighborhood, but it's been a lot of fun. We had National Night Out this last um October, and though, really got into it. Um into the foam party.
You were just getting married.
Yeah, it has been a lot of fun um doing those events, and I can speak for midtown that ours has just grown and grown and grown. I think there's a sentiment, at least within our neighborhood, that people wanna get together and they really want to be a part, like, you know, the Leave It to Beaver kind of mentality is coming back. Um so it's it's been a lot of fun to watch it grow. Uh but National Night Out was a success, just sort of across the board, and we appreciate y'all coming out to those. Our Neighborhood Leadership Academy, as I mentioned, um this is also under uh Belinda's Neighborhood Engagement Team. Uh this program, and I think a lot of y'all have have come to that, it's really geared towards educating people on how the city works. So when a code compliance system, when a code compliance template is filed, what happens then? How how does that process go from there? So people don't think, oh, it's been two weeks and nothing has happened. They understand why uh that that takes some time. And that's just one example, but Belinda will have a, an array of city departments come in and talk about those types of things, just sort of a behind-the-scenes look at the government and how how the departments work. Um she's done a great job of steaming the event every year and really kind of keeping it fresh and relevant. Um our biggest challenge is getting the people that register to actually come on the day of the event, so we've been talking about different tactics for that um with our marketing team, and so hopefully we'll be able to see an increase in um folks actually coming to that register. The Love Where You Live Initiative has been ongoing and uh is still going really strong. We're almost complete with East Downs and Oak Hills. Um I think both of those, you guys should uh receive final presentations on hopefully pretty quickly. And we had some uh just some things pop up within those two districts that just really needed additional attention, and so we've kind of um fallen back and have addressed those things, and now we're uh getting close to the point of being satisfied and bringing those forward. And I think you guys are gonna be really impressed with that work, especially East Downs. That one is one that uh I think we're all, all, everyone on the team is just really excited about. Our Neighborhood Identification Program is also going strong. We have completed the first phase, Ferguson, Crestview, historic and Bel Air. And um really happy with how those signs turned out. Um and we're under construction with Midtown Garden, Jackson and Temple Heights. Those are almost completed. We're getting really, really close. I think we're just waiting on Encore um to do some work for some electric meters for those, and then we'll be done with those, and then we're in design. We're Bird Creek Barn Hart, Lost Priestess and Northwest Hills, and all of those signs, they just continue to get better and better. Um so I I um I'm really excited for you guys to see this next set.
We were at Ferguson Park this past weekend, and the toppers on the street sign looked so nice, too. It really is welcoming. We all did a good job with that.
We've gotten a lot of great comments about them, too, just, well, now where they're living now, you know, so, yeah.
Have all of the neighborhoods in the city been identified or named?
Not every one.
Yet.
Okay.
We're working on that.
Yeah.
We have twenty-five identified neighborhoods, and the, and we, well, we started with eighteen, which were the core, you know, kind of downtown and the surrounding. We added um seven a couple of years ago, and then Aaron and the team are working on a project to identify a, you know, a citywide map so that every neighborhood in the community is within a neighborhood district. Um and so that's um I haven't seen, actually, I think she has sent me the uh the draft map, but we haven't met to talk about it, so it's in process. Uh but right now, we have twenty-five identified.
Thank you.
Nancy, have you had anybody complain about whenever the toppers go on, just you have the original sign wrapped at an intersection? You were putting the identifier on top of that, and then I think maybe that weight sometimes um skews the whole, the whole sign, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and we
Are we addressing that?
Went back and changed the hardware to a different type, made it instead of six-inch, nine-inch, I think. I don't know, it was a lot of jargon that I didn't quite follow, but um if we were being led by Michael Phillips uh with our streets, our street department, making recommendations about the right hardware to use, so uh we are falling back and fixing any of those that are having stability problems.
And I'm wondering if even like the original sign needed tapping right before the the original set, before you put the topper on and whatever y'all are calling that.
Good point.
You just hate to roll something new out and then it looks sloppy.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah. Okay.
Um so we've been working uh really closely with the agencies in town. Um you guys know that we we sort of had to uh go back to the drawing board on the Arbor Hope and are sort of retooling that. Uh in the process of of all of that, we've been working really closely with the agencies to um continue to provide uh resources as as collaboratively as we can. Um knowing that we're moving towards a bigger solution. Uh so we had a movie premiered in April at Vista Church. This is a movie that Dr. Marbit was a consultant on, and he actually has like a a cameo in the movie where he hit somebody with his car. Uh he was very proud of it. And he actually came, he came to the movie premiere uh and texts me all the time about things that are going on at the national level. Um he's been great. Um so at the premiere, we announced uh Mayor Embren with Just Eagle, the official um naming of Feed My Sheep as being the lead agency for our uh initiatives addressing homelessness within Temple and specifically the Little Flock Community, which is what we have renamed the um the Arbor Hope uh project. From that, we have developed the Pathways to Stability Program. Um this is what you guys approved at council uh for the subrecipient agreement with CDVG Funding um for Feed My Sheep a couple of months ago, or maybe eight months ago. Um this is basically a person-centered approach to ending homelessness. So uh the idea is that for each person, um they will have a journey map, for lack of a better word, that will show how um they're going to progress through each step that they need to reach stability. So um starting off with, with ground zero, do you have an ID? Do you have a birth certificate? Do you have a social security card? You know, some of those, those um sort of baseline things. Each one of those, with the exception of the social security card replacement, has a fee associated with it. Um it costs money to get a replacement birth certificate, it costs money to get a replacement ID. Um those types of fees and things were just being absorbed by the agencies in town um through, you know, outside donations. But this will streamline everything through Feed My Sheep and they'll be able to um utilize the funding that you guys were approved for them to help that client with everything that they need for every step of their, their path. Um so we're really excited to get that started. Uh Jeff Steagle, the executive director of Feed My Sheep, has been meeting with all of the different agencies and uh making sure that, that they all know that we, we want to all work together. We wanna try to eliminate duplication of services. And um really uh create a unified approach uh that sort of encircles the client and gives them what they need to um see ultimate stability. This is sort of an example of um or a slide that shows really what we've been able to accomplish since the strategic plan has been put into place and really how the, the agencies were working together, that thought process has sort of come into um a stronger focus. Um working together, we've been able to accomplish all of this so far. Transition forty-two people into housing, um three hundred and sixty-seven families into housing, forty-nine individuals with um to reunify them with family members out of this community outside of town. Um thirty-four people into substance use disorder treatment. Hundred and fifty-seven people with um rental assistance to present them from extended homeless to keep them in our homes and provide that stability. Three hundred and forty-one in emergency shelter, that's hotel stays um essentially, and then uh twenty-one hundred and fifteen in the warming shelter last year. That is all a combination of all of these agencies. Um so the idea is that we, we continue to work together and um build that sort of journey map for each client with each agency sort of playing their part. And um no one really having to absorb undue cost related to that.
Can also be
This is Rachel up here in the top. Um she was one of the, the clients that we've helped. And I think I've talked to her, talked about her with y'all before, but um she was the eighty-five-year-old that was outside of the summit um a year ago this month, actually, it's probably a year ago, like right about now. Um cause I took her to Thanksgiving last year with my family, so it had to have been right, like right around the time. Uh but PD found her um through a, a customer complaint from the summit. They contacted me, um I reached out to Feed My Sheep. We were able to help navigate her through getting all of her IDs and um and all of that. She, she didn't, she had schizophrenia, so it was really difficult to, to do all that, took us about ninety days. Uh but she hadn't had access to her bank accounts since um, yeah, she, I talked to you about her. Um since twenty nineteen. And um her social security just kept being deposited and deposited and deposited. And um she just wasn't able to access any of it because she didn't have an ID. So when we finally were able to get her ID, she had ninety thousand dollars in the bank. Had been living on the street since twenty nineteen, sleeping outside. Because no one would take the time to help her get her ID and navigate all of that. Now, she's in her house, that's her sitting in her house on her couch. I took her lunch today. Same, same Rachel. Um and she celebrated her eighty-sixth birthday in July in her living room for the first time in six years. She had a birthday inside. So that was a combination of a lot of agents there as well and just surrounding her and um giving her this support that she needed to, to navigate all of that. It's, it's hard for someone who has a good mental capacity to figure out all the forms and how to, you know, do this and where to go for that. Um and then you throw in mental illness and no support, no family, and it's, it's really next to impossible. Um so this is the updated design that um we showed you guys before. I think it was in July when we brought the updated plan um to you guys for consideration um with the partnership with Feed My Sheep. And um we're super excited about that. I think the next step, as we, we sort of talked about with y'all, is the public hearing for the conversion of the property. Um and that uh is coming up here on uh December the second. Um and so
Will that be broken down in phases with the six and then?
No, that's for this, that will be for the first phase. And we have identified all but one point five million dollars of funding to do this.
So many.
Just that, you know, you say it really fast, but there's not much money at all.
Where are you looking? Yeah. Well, and the six point one, I mean, y'all have heard me say this before, but the six point one is the engineer's opinion of probable cost, as if the city were bidding this work at a, you know, completely normal, you know, project that does not involve, you know, ownership and support through nonprofits. So um there is, there's a, you know, roughly a one point five million gap from full price, I think, you know, is how I would uh say it, to uh funding available. So that doesn't take into consideration any opportunities for local companies to provide um, you know, work at cost or in, you know, at uh donate labor or provide materials at cost. And so we um uh that, that that in and of itself, the generosity of, of uh the businesses within the community and what they may offer um could bring uh that, you know, even closer to being closed, so. Um but just the, the section one oh eight loan and the I wish I could remember that grant name, but it just doesn't stick with me. Federal Home Loan Bank uh Grant. Uh those two funding sources that we feel, you know, very, very um good about being eligible, this project being eligible for would cover all the, about one point five of that cost. And then Feed My Sheep and, and the nonprofit community are um dedicated to closing that gap through um community fundraising and bringing the, the community out to help with the project. So we feel really hopeful that that is a doable thing and something that can, can be closed by the generosity of the community.
The day we look at this in your office with Erin, Nancy, I don't know why I remember three point six, that's way off. I guess I'm just not remembering that correctly.
For the amount?
Yeah.
These numbers haven't changed, so I'm trying to think of what might have been three point six.
The one oh eight one is pretty close to that number.
Uh-huh.
I used to follow that.
Mm-hmm. And that would be, sir, that may, that may be the number you were thinking of because that would be the direct that, that would be the amount that the city of Temple would be directly involved in because in one of the loan is something that the city itself is eligible for, but not other.
Mm-hmm.
And then the Federal Home Loan Bank would probably be something that um the nonprofit partner applies for and receives directly. So we, we, maybe that number was the, the part we would directly be involved in.
I get it, please.
The Tenant-Based Real Assistance Program is really going strong. These folks are all straight from homelessness and put into housing. Um so this isn't like going from one unit to another. These were people on the street experiencing street-level homelessness. And uh twenty-six currently housed in, in a program. Um three are approved but not housed, meaning we're just still trying to find a unit that will accept them and um get them placed. Two are currently pending approval. Nine have been dropped from the program for various reasons, including uh one that passed away. Uh so there, there are a variety of different things that have impacted those nine. And then for
Those, those nine that dropped, how many dropped voluntarily? They weren't adhering to your
Three.
Okay.
Yes, we have been, I were not adhering to the rules.
Yeah.
Just wanted to highlight one more project um as a, as sort of an example of, like, the, the things that these agencies are doing are not just for people experiencing homelessness, they're for people experiencing poverty. People experiencing housing instability for a variety of different reasons, including this one. This gentleman um was living, he, he's a diabetic, he's addicted to bed and wheelchair. Um but he was living in this, this is his bed. Um so he, when, when um we found him, it was by a referral from um, I think one of the churches that had, had gone over to help him or something. And they saw him living in, in this um condition. And uh because of his diabetes, there were things that were happening to him because of the rats in, in the room that he didn't even realize were happening. It was awful. And so we were able to get him out of there and into a hotel with the help of, of um three different donors within the community paid for, I think, two or three weeks of a hotel while we cleaned this ward. These are all, except for Jeff, these are all people experiencing homelessness that just wanted to help. They came in and it was awful, y'all. I, I can't even tell you the smell, I can still smell it. Um it was just horrendous, but they all just smiling and you know, just went in there and did what needed to be done because they didn't want this man to live like that. And it was just, it was a beautiful thing. It was awful and I'll, I, I wish I could get the, the sights and smells out of my head, but it was a beautiful thing too.
Where was it?
On uh Veterans Memorial, right across the street from the VA. He's a veteran. The man that lives, that lives there. Um which is good because now that we've got the horde cleared and the house clean and everything nice, we were able to also, because of Mary McGlory, connect him with Home Health Services through the VA. And now they're coming in twice a week, keeping everything clean, cooking for him, taking care of him. And that won't happen again. It was, it, it was an awesome, awesome day. Nice presentation. Question, additional question?
Um I just wanted to, I like that you had a really wonderful event this week. The lunch um that you, you did not miss a single person in that room. You went around and thanked each one that was there, each group individually and then each person themselves. It was just really, it's really very moving to see all the hard work that you guys do. It, it's so much. There's so much going on and so many um foods on the ground, so thank you. I'm afraid you spent so much time thanking other people and we didn't turn it on you and thank you for all your hard work.
Well, thank you. I'm so glad you came and I'm glad you
Oh, the food was great. I'm not gonna miss a good meal.
Very good.
That's a good thing. Sorry. Just again, I think you make a good point about Nancy being so um generous in her praise and thanks to others and, and not um highlighting how much of this work is directly the result of her heart for it. You know, with Ms. Rachel, I know, for example, that um Nancy personally took on, you know, um just fought for that and to stay with her every step of the way. Um, you know, going to the appointments with her, to the bank and to the social securities o- office. And she would give me an update, you know, every week about, you know, we've okay, we got our social security card and now, you know, we've got this and it just, just staying on top of it. And I think you go see her weekly, um every day, daily. Um so it's not, it's not just a job for Nancy. She really has a, a huge heart and uh we're really lucky to have her and the leadership. She, she's really um created this department and these programs. They were much needed and uh she's, she's done a great job and we've uh we're really lucky for, for her and what she does for us and our community, those in most vulnerable positions.
Well, Lou, Brad.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
But